I don't have my glasses, so when I read.
Do you need mine? Can play work.
I got mine if you want.
Awesome. All right, now I'm still.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, Tuesday.
Excuse me, gentlemen, we're about to begin.
Yep. Let's try that again. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 10th. It's the monthly meeting, the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everyone could stand and say the pledge of allegiance first, please. All right. All right. Go ahead. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. All right. First item on our agenda is request for waiver of site plan review approval continuation. Craig Olson and Kathleen Gesbauer for Woodside Montessori. And I assume you're Craig?
I am Craig, yep.
All right.
Good evening. I apologize for last month's poor summer scheduling on my part. Actually, Kathy is on vacation this week, so you're stuck with just me tonight. As we discussed in our last hearing that I was in attendance, the board had requested confirmation as far as building permit and those items. The owner has been unable to find their copy of the building permit, unfortunately. And so, and we've reached out to the building inspection department and have unsuccessfully been able to obtain a copy of it at this point. To that point, I did provide Kabeel, Ms. Stanley, a copy of an email from the building inspector indicating that the permit has been issued, given to the owner. We hope that would suffice as part of the building permit process. Before a permit can be issued, it requires sign off by the board of health fire department. And so, that issue of a building permit would address the comment regarding the fire department signing up and approving as well.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, so we, all we wanted to do is, you know, when we approved it initially, you know, it was during COVID, so we just wanted to make sure, you know, everyone was fine with it. I saw the letter from the fire department. If you got occupancy, obviously, at one point in time, the building inspector thought that was fine. So, yeah, I think for in record, if you can find and/or get one, we'd love to have one in file, just so we have it. But I don't see any, I think basically everything has been given to us, so I feel pretty confident on going ahead with that. So, Kabeel, I make a waiver?
I make a motion to.
Yeah. Yeah, so I make a motion that we approve the waiver request for site plan review for 350 Village Street, Woodside Montessori Academy.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made in second. Any comment from the board? Okay, good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Unanimous. All right, good. Well, thank you for your help.
Well, I wish every year it was this easy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, good. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is special permit application with full with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for GTE Millis, 1480 and 1486 Main Street. Proposed construction of a marijuana cultivation facility.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:35 PM in the, at 900 Main Street, Millis, Mass. The agenda will, no, that's all right. An application submitted by GTE Millis LLC, 251 North Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass., 02301 is requesting a special permit, slight site plan approval of the zoning bylaw of the town of Millis for proposed construction of a marijuana cultivation facility located at 1480 and 1486 Main Street, Millis, Mass. Assessors map 21, lots 9, 26, 28, 29, 30, and map 32, lot 2. Owner, A.H. Cedar LLC, Peter Harkey. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person designated or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right. Thank you. So, just for the public, the location of this property would be across from R&amp;R Auto, just down the street from Black Cow. Right now, it's a, it was a previously developed commercial property with an old ratty building that's been abandoned for about 20 years. And, and this company is looking to develop the site and put in a growing facility. So, if you guys wanted to walk through your plan for us, that'd be great.
Sure, we'd be glad to. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering Solutions, representing GTE Millis LLC. With me tonight is attorney Patrick Sullivan. And then to my right is Dr. Matthew Hoffman with GTE. And to my left is Jemmen Patel with GTE. The last time we were, well, not really here, but before you was via Zoom, I think, two months ago. And at that time, just by way of recap, we had submitted a set of site plans that we felt were suitable for special permit, not anticipating that we were going to move forward with site plan review at the same time. So, we kind of kicked things off, gave a presentation, a brief presentation, and said, you know, basically, we'll come back to you with some updated and improved plans that cover the details of site plan review. So, that's what we've done. I think we submitted a set of plans back to Beta's office three-ish weeks ago. And, you know, with kind of some more bells and whistles and nuts and bolts on them, the most notable of those things being the stormwater management plan for the project. We do have a review letter from Beta. We addressed a lot of the comments that they had initially provided, and there are some new comments in here based on some things centering around the stormwater management design. So, we can certainly go through any of these in any detail, but if you'd like, I can walk through the plan changes real quick, just to kind of give an updated lay of the land as to where things stand now, if the board would prefer that.
Yeah, if you want to do the executive summary, that would be great.
Sure, I'll give you the quick overview.
Yeah.
And can they see that? Cam?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah. All right, I want to see if I can do this from this angle, but I think this guy moves. He doesn't move, he gets knocked over. So, we're not going to do that. This is our existing conditions plan. I think the chairman gave a pretty good overview. This is a site that's been kind of, I'll call it in disrepair, for the last 20 years or so. There's not a whole lot going on here. We've got a big parking area in the front in this area with a space metal building back here. It's a mix of a couple different kinds of construction at this point. We have delineated wetlands on the site, both along the easterly boundary and then back down along the southerly boundary of the work area. I just go back to this page, the cover page for a minute, has a good detail of the entirety of the site. The site is very big, it spans all the way over to the Midway Town Line. But the area that we're focused on is only this kind of leg in the front here that abuts on, on Main Street. Everything else, we're kind of staying away from at the time, for the time being. So, this is our layout sheet. We're proposing a building that is, I believe, it's 73,800 square feet, a pretty good-sized building. We have an entrance to the left-hand side of the building, and it kind of loops around and comes to an entrance on the right-hand side of the building. Most of the parking is focused in the back area of the building over here, although we do have some parking along the sides, mostly for handicap parking on this side and employee parking on the other. We do have, you'll see that we have several kind of areas identified as mechanical areas around the site, concrete pads, perchillers, and all of the things that need to be on the site to make the inside operations happen the way that they're supposed to. So, that really actually drove a lot of our site design as far as the layout is concerned on this property. We have proposing 123 parking spaces. We have talked about whether or not we need that many spaces. We believe that we actually do need that many spaces to house the operations of the facility. We're expecting to have a good amount, excuse me, of, of workers within both the office area and the, the grow facility at the same time.
And Eric, just to bring up a point, so the parking that you're providing is for people that would be in the facility only, there's no public parking?
No public parking, no customers.
This is not open for the public?
Not open for the public, no sales, no nothing. There may be the occasional visitor that comes for business purposes, but this is not by any means any retail establishment type of parking or anything like that. So, the parking provided is only for employees and guests specifically related to the business. One of our comments was to provide a snow storage area, so we have provided snow storage areas along the side here and along the back here. One thing that we've been able to do on this project is to really, some of it is within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. And as you know, your conservation has its 50-foot no-touch buffer zone. We've been able to stay completely outside of that buffer zone here. There was a previous proposal on this site that did not do that. In fact, the current site doesn't even do that. The current site encroaches right up to the wetland boundary. So, we're actually proposing a betterment, which obviously you folks can appreciate, but is more geared toward the Conservation Commission when we go there with a notice of intent Regarding our stormwater management design is, it's a challenging site. There is some, some high groundwater levels, there are some high bedrock levels based on the test pit data that we've received. So, we've combined a system that is a combination of subsurface infiltration and surface water retention. There is a portion of the site over here that will collect and drain out to the municipal system in Main Street. There is a portion of the site over here that will collect some stormwater and pass it into a surface detention basin and outlet it toward the wetland. And then there is another portion of the site back here that will do the same thing. Will collect the mud and runoff from the site, treat it within a service stormwater basin, and pass it off that way. And again, we do have some comments from Beta, a couple of i's to dot and t's to cross on the stormwater design. Nothing that we feel is going to be detrimental. In fact, we've started working on it. We didn't want to submit anything to the board right before this meeting. So, certainly, we can address any of those in detail.
And on that one, so, two of their comments was, number one, you had one of the systems infill, so that would be, that was one of the comments. And then the other one was the test pits were done earlier, and they weren't done in the specific areas where the work would be, that those would be done. So, that would be something that we'd be looking for.
So, in fact, that's something that I'd like to, that I wanted to discuss with the board. So, typically, when we have that happen, we have two options. We can either go out and do some more test pits now. What we saw for test pit results for the data that we have was reasonably consistent throughout the site, though. What we would really appreciate asking the board is if we could do test pits as a confirmatory measure prior to construction, to be witnessed by Beta and approved, obviously, before we get a building permit. It would just be more convenient on our end because we would already be able to mobilize equipment to the site and things like that.
Now, this is Caitlin's first meeting, so Caitlin, this is where I throw you under the bus.
We'll put you right on the spot.
So, on that one, that, that seems reasonable to me, but what would Beta's stance be on that, doing that if, along the way?
I think, I think Beta would be okay with that. They're just looking to make sure that it's consistent with the rest of the lines.
Okay, great. Yeah, if that's something the board would consider, it would certainly do us a huge.
Yeah, we'll consider it, but at least.
Okay, great. Sure. And that's a completely reasonable ask. We acknowledge that the test pits do need to be done just to meet the regulations so clearly. Just moving through the plan set very quickly to continue with the executive overview, we have provided a utility plan here. All the utilities are available in Main Street. One thing that we do know, and it was something else that was brought up in Beta's letter, not to jump ahead, we have very low water pressure out here. So, we are going to need water booster pumps and things like that. The design of those systems, obviously, generally don't come during site plan review. They're more of a construction document phase. So, I think Beta made a comment to ask us to confirm with the DPW and the water department that we have sufficient water use available to us. What we might ask, again, is that that be something that's made a condition of a building permit to allow us to get through our systems design before we can really render it, ask the DPW to render a fair decision on that. But again, we defer to the board. We provided a full erosion control plan on this. We provided a full lighting plan on this. All of the lighting is dark sky compliant, LED, downward facing, nothing that's going to cast light off the property or even into Main Street. One thing that we have not provided as of yet is a planting plan. That is still in process. I think something that I, we might also like to discuss with the board, by the regulation solely, we end up needing something like 50 trees out here. Given that this is an industrial site, I don't know how the board feels about that extensive of a planting, if it's really necessary. We don't have a lot of ability to plant in the front of the building because that's where all of our utility connections are coming in, and we have stormwater management systems designed. So, what that ends up meaning is that we have a lot of trees kind of along the side here and along the back where they're not necessarily effective, and they're really only going in for the purpose of meeting that, that portion of the regulation. So, that's something that we'd like to discuss with the board as well.
Wait, let's, let's, we'll make a note of that and come back to that.
Sure, we can come back to that. And then, as far as civil site, I think I'll call that there, but I will spend a moment just to go through some renderings. This is a floor plan of the proposed building. Let me go this way. This is the main entrance over here, office space through this area, flower rooms over here, things like that. But I think what probably matters more than that at this stage are the graphics to show what we're envisioning this building actually looking like. And if I can make my fingers work the right way, we can get there. So, this is a rendering of what we're envisioning the building looking like. The top, this would actually be standing in the parking lot, looking at the main entrance. And then this guy, this is looking at the main entrance, so Main Street would be out here in this view. This would be looking at the building from Main Street. So, what you're seeing is, is a screened area for mechanicals over here and a sign on the building, but other than that, the face of the building, there's no windows, there's none of that stuff. So, really, we'd be looking to dress that up with a little bit of shrubbery and landscaping to kind of take the curse off and give it a nice feel from Main Street. So, those are the particulars of it. I'll be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I'd say that the Main Street view would be the thing in, like, in areas in town. We've done something to, like you said, dress it up, so, yeah, I know you can't, you'd be putting, to quote lipstick on a pig, so to speak, but, you know, something, if you could do something in the front, that would help soften it. I think that would be something we'd be looking for. Typically, the other thing is on the trees, if you have a number that are specifically required, what we would do is ask for a donation for our tree fund because all our trees are dying in town and need to be cut down. So, we, what we do is we could, you could give us a, you know, money in that fund in deference to planting the trees. But we would need to see something in the planting plan.
Sure.
The whole idea on that is, you know, if you drive up and down, we try to soften it a little, and you are in an industrial area, so the expectations are not as high as it would be if it was downtown.
Sure.
And I had one other thing. Nope, actually, you already took care of that, so that was, that was that, so. Does anyone else on the board have questions?
I did. Go ahead. Back to you, George.
How tall is this building?
Building, I don't have a final height on the building as of yet, but.
Around 30 feet.
Building is around 30 feet tall. So, it comes in under the allowable building height allowed by the zone.
Okay, and it's a steel building?
Steel building, yes.
Okay, and color?
I believe, as advertised here, it's probably going to be a white face with some green on it. Is that accurate, Jemmen?
It's going to be a white.
Green and orange seem to be popular in that neighborhood lately.
Alan, what did you have?
Yeah, I agree. It looks like a warehouse from the front, so.
Soften it up.
Yeah, maybe some trees, arborvitally, something like that. I had a comment on the parking. I know you'll be looking for a waiver. I know we have precedent on giving waivers pretty freely, however, that was prior to our attempting to reduce the size of the parking spaces by vote of the town at town meeting, which did not pass. So, I'm concerned about setting a new precedent by granting a waiver against our standard parking size. So, is there any way you could accommodate our 21-foot spaces there?
That's something that we can certainly take a look at. I don't think there's a dramatic difference. What you require is 9 by 21, we're requesting 10 by 20. We like the 10-foot wide just because it's a little bit better for some of our delivery vehicles, parking, things like that. But if it's something that the board feels strongly about, we can take a look at the size.
Yeah, I'm, personally, it's, you know, it's just the precedent and the fact that the town did not want to reduce the size, safety concerns mostly. And I do realize the building's not open to the public, so there's a little less need for the safety component. Thank you.
Sure. Oh, on that line, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the other thing that we should note, and I should have gone over this, we did request a secondary waiver for loading spaces. I think by right, your bylaw would require us to have five loading spaces. We've proposed two, a surface loading space for a box truck or something like that, and then we do have a ramp, a recessed ramp that would allow us to load there. And based on, we don't have a high frequency of deliveries or receiving shipments and things like that, so for our needs, we feel that that's adequate.
So, are you going to present us with a formal list of waiver requests?
As of right now, there's only two.
Yeah.
And they are on the plan on the layout sheet. We can certainly type up a formal waiver request list if the board would like us to, that's not a problem. The only other waiver that I can anticipate us maybe asking for is a waiver on the trees that we had talked about.
All right, so if, yeah, so we would like to have that waiver list submitted.
Formal list.
Yeah, and if you could get some sort of planting plan, that would be good.
Sure.
And then I think you did have the beta, I can't, I read the beta letter, but I can't remember everything on it, but I think, hopefully, get a couple of housekeeping things, if you could, I, yeah, I don't think you've addressed those yet, latest version.
We have not addressed the current comments from Beta, the most recent, I think, we received them Thursday.
Yeah.
There are a few things on there, for example, confirm with the fire department a few things and that they would send stormwater management comments.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a, yeah, ask you to get a letter from the fire chief. Can't remember if you, they already did. Okay, so we already got that.
Okay, great.
So, you're good. Yeah, and the chief of police, sorry, had already, had already said that he approved your security plan.
Yes.
So, that's all taken care of.
Yes.
Go ahead. If you could speak up at the mic. If you'd let everyone know who you are.
Oh, Jemmen Patel, GT. So, one of the other comments was also related to the flow test, and we needed to get the confirmation from DPW as well as the fire chief. But I was just wondering if we can request that to be a.
A part of the building permit?
Yeah, just because it's something that will happen.
That's fine, because you want to work on, you want to get the site plan approval out of way before you start doing the mechanicals.
The construction documents and stuff.
That makes sense. Thank you. Great.
And I'll ask the chairman if, between now and the next meeting, certainly, we want to move this along as quickly as possible, is it okay for us to reach out to Beta directly?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, let's, let's get, let's get all the answers together so we can get that taken care of.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind just CCing me on an email.
Absolutely. You got it, no problem.
Send it to her and she'll see, and CC me. All right, great. So, we're going to put this to be continued to our next hearing.
Yeah, next available, I think.
Sorry, public, sorry, public, I forgot about the public. Are there any comments from the public? All right, great. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Yep. September 7th at.
7:30.
7:30.
Okay, great. Thank you all for your time.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, so, next. We're actually on schedule. Acorn Place Senior Residential Development, informal discussion continued, and that would be continued again per applicant's.
No, you skipped over.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry about that. Let's try that again. So, we're not on schedule.
Dan didn't come just to, because he loves us.
All right, sorry about that. Next item is special permit with waiver of site plan approval, public hearing continued for 1370 and 1372 Main Street, open storage of equipment to display.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing. In accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a public hearing in person on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:45 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Steve Ryder Papa Giorgio LLC. 45 Irving Street, Suite 1, Millis, Mass., requesting a special permit with a site, with a waiver of site plan approval under Section 5, Use Regulations, Table 1, Wholesale Transportation and Industrial, Number 14, open storage of equipment of the zoning bylaw of the town of Millis for displaying rental equipment at 1370 and 1372 Main Street, Millis, Mass. Map 21, Parcell 16 and 11. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the plan, of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, great. And Dan, since, no, I didn't skip over you, could you, could you run through what they're looking to do, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Merrick in Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. We appeared before you at your last meeting, but you didn't have a quorum, so we had to continue here. This is a proposal to utilize the existing building at 1370 Main Street, which is just down the street from the site you were talking about. It's an existing building up front, it's vacant. The applicant would like to move into that building, and you'd have a construction equipment rental facility, like a grand rental station or something like that, you know, basically just rental equipment for people to, to rent construction gear. So, we're asking for a site plan waiver to just allow them to move into the building. There are no site improvements. We have an existing driveway. We have a driveway in front, a looped driveway in front, we have parking areas in front, there's also a common driveway that comes along the lot line here, there's parking areas on the side, there's an open storage area out back. So, we don't need to do anything to the site to accommodate that. The nature of the special permit request is they would like the ability to upfront, put a few pieces of equipment, basically to advertise what they do. And we're talking about three or four pieces of equipment. So, that's it. It's a pretty straightforward application.
And the sign, when they put a sign up, will be through the building department?
Yes.
All right, any questions for the board? Alan?
Just wondering, what sort of restrictions would there be that would keep it from becoming a parking lot full of backhoes and caterpillars and things like that?
You could put a restriction on the number.
I think that would be important.
Four sufficient? Four, if you wanted to put a number of four.
Oh, in the front?
In the front, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
In the front.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, okay, that makes sense, that's a good point.
Yeah, Steve would like to say a few words here.
So, Steve Ryder, Town of Mills, live here. We're not talking big construction equipment, we're talking like a 495 rental, so a bobcat is probably going to be about the biggest thing I'll have, or a boom lift. So, we're not talking huge D10s or something like that. We don't want to end up with 20 bobcats. Right, yeah, no, it's not going to, yeah. We want something presentable, too. Good, thank you.
All right, anyone else have any comments? Anyone in the audience? Nope. All right, I make a motion that we.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the...
Grant the special permit.
Approve the waiver of the special permit, site plan approval.
Site plan waiver, two separate things, site plan waiver and the grant of special permit.
All right, so, all right, so say that again.
First thing you would, you could act on is the waiver of site plan review.
Okay, so I make a motion that we waive the site plan approval for thirteen seventy and thirteen seventy-two Main Street.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then the second thing is that we grant the special permit, so I make a motion that we grant the special permit with the restriction that only four pieces... I can call it restriction, too. That only four pieces of equipment should be placed out front and displayed at thirteen seventy, thirteen seventy-two Main Street.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you for your time.
So when do you guys have a rental sheet out, so we can look it up?
I'll go from March first.
March first, I have to wait that long?
(laughing).
Some of the equipment is already on a forty-two week backboard.
Oh, yeah. It's okay. I have, I have, I have a stove, we have a stove for the project I'm on, it's a thirteen month wait, and they can't even guarantee, we bought it over a year ago, and they can't even guarantee we're going to get it.
Kitchen stove?
Yeah, we'd like to be sooner, but we can't get the equipment.
All right, great, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, next item, I tried to jump to. Acorn Place Senior Residential Development, informal discussion continued, to be continued to the next meeting per applicant's request. So we don't, do we have to read it still?
No, there's no public hearing, but you can reschedule it to September seventh, after the fourteen eighty, how much time do you want to give for that? Fifteen minutes? So we can step it to the past?
Yeah, sure. All right, so scheduled to nine seven at seven forty-five. All right, next is the Dover State Subdivision, informal decision, discussion continued, status update, Mr. Sullivan. And just so you know, Mr. Sullivan, we did, Beta went out and looked, and so the, you put some, they had some runoff before, that's where we had you in. They did some, they went through, and you put in the swale, and put in some check things. And it seems like it's been working.
Yeah, it has been working, the last rainstorm we had, it didn't, it didn't clog in the street. But I, you know, so I'm getting ready to rake, hopefully we don't get more water and the loom doesn't turn into mud, and then I can hydro seed, and hopefully it will be all done.
So, yeah, so the question on that is, so, you know, it looks like that's, that's worked out well.
Yeah.
I think the two comments, I think, Camille, you sent him the email from...
I did know.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay, sorry.
Sentiment on the...
I didn't see anything.
No, no, we, well, we talked, we're going to send you the email.
I thought you got that, okay. Sorry, I got an email from Melissa, and I meant to go with that.
So the only two things that she had on it was that we, you still needed to do your ask built for us to close the special permit.
Right, yeah.
And then the only other thing was that the grass in the back still hasn't fully grown, and I understand. So the question to you is, and which we could ask Beta in or you, we want to close it, we want to get it closed.
I do, too. So I want to wait until like September, late September, to see if anything is, still comes in.
Well, could, I'm just thinking of the parts.
And then I'm going to have the guy come back and touch it up.
Could you do, if we did, could we have you put like a bond or something to...
I already have the bond.
For that, okay. So that we'd leave it under that?
It's kind of cleaned up, yeah.
I just, what I want to do is, I want, we want to have some sort of, let's say...
I'm not going anywhere, you know, I'm not going anywhere. How many projects have I done, so I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, all right.
So I don't want, you know, it's a big thing, everybody drives by, and I don't want my name trashed around town saying I didn't finish something that I was supposed to do.
All right, so you'll get us the ask built.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that was, you know, sorry to drag you in, but we want to make sure that, you know...
Lucky I live just down the street.
And Camille, can you give me a copy of that?
So, there was also, she also made comment of the sentiment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
Would it be possible to, and I noticed on the parts of it, you've had, you know, sandbags, but would it be worthwhile before, at some point, to run those down the side and along the bottom?
I did. I don't think it, now that the swale's there, all the water's going in the swale, there's nothing, except for the first twenty feet of the driveway, is coming down that driveway.
I'm trying to remember this project, did we have a berm on the edge of that at all?
No.
We didn't, no.
No, Millis has been overlooked at it, so basically he did everything that was...
It's done, and then, you know, we made the swale bigger than what they had, just because, and we put riprap in there.
To slow the water.
And I put some down before the catch basin where it didn't clog, just to slow anything and catch any dirt that's going to go down there, but...
Okay.
I think once it's, once it's seeded, and the grass is going to absorb, you know, a good portion of it.
All right, good.
All right.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and next on the agenda would be an A and R application, Form A for two forty-five Ridge Street.
I don't have to read them.
Oh, you don't have to, oh.
But thank you. You have to tell me what title that is.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Peter Temple, I'm the applicant, and I'm afraid you are, I'm all you get tonight, because my engineer is on vacation, and normally he'd probably be here and I wouldn't, but I should be able to answer, I think, most of your basic questions, if you have any, and I'm counting on the fact that you've got a package there with exhibits, because I did not bring my, Dan, big ones.
And let me get some of the larger prints.
All right, so on this one, you're basically, and actually, I'm going to let, we have two attorneys here, so I will let each of...
I don't know if that book is well for you.
(laughing). Do you want to comment, or Josh, do you want to comment on that? Because lawyer stuff, I actually have to get a book out to translate what you guys say.
Yeah, so I can provide just a brief overview of what Camille had asked us to look over, so...
Could you do that, Mike?
Yes. So, we were going back and forth between counsel as to the definition of an A and R versus a subdivision, because they were focused on Title V standards, which are regulated by the Board of Health in compliance with state regulations for septic systems, and I know that there's adjacent properties that would be affected, but in this case, really, we're not talking about a subdivision, right? So at the end of the day, we just, we're talking about an existing building that we're separating off from the adjacent land that's, that has a restriction on it, from conservation that's not going to be used as a dwelling, so we're just limiting it to this specific space to be developed, if I'm not mistaken, or is there...
It's already developed.
Right, are there going to be changes, renovations?
The only change that we're making, it's currently, it's been a paper lot since nineteen seventy-eight, because there's a CR on the property.
Right.
And the existing house and garage and barn are excluded from the CR.
Okay.
But we're going to be selling the property, unfortunately, and it's not going to pass Title V, so we've got an application in for a new system, to make sure we meet the setbacks on the new system, there's, you know, that's, that's part of what's going in here, is making sure that this two-point-one acre lot will...
That's what's being regulated.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
And those other two lots are just, basically, they're different and it doesn't matter, so...
Yeah, exactly.
It just, all that was, is just a little extra confusion.
Okay, so just to clarify for the public, the question arose is with regards to whether or not it's an A and R or a subdivision constitutes, when you develop, dividing a piece of property into two or more lots, and you are placing in a new road, that constitutes a subdivision. In this instance, there is no new road, and the two lots, once they're divided, each of the two new lots will still have adequate front, the appropriate frontage, a minimum frontage. So that means it, no, it is not a subdivision. The issue with regards to the Board of Health is that one of, one of our regulations has to do with when property is subdivided, unsued area, then the portion that did not have the septic had to be tested. Because the language of our Board of Health regulations, specifically, the title is subdivision of land in unsued area, this is not a subdivision, this is an A and R, this is, and there was a letter actually, I think that Camille gave to everybody that had gone out from the planning board about, thank you, yeah, yeah, sixteen years ago. That still holds true today, that when the planning board is issuing the A and R, the planning board is not stating that zoning meets, that anything, any other requirements septic, all of that still has to go to those regulation, those different boards. All we're stating is that these two lots meet the requirements, they are not a subdivision, and therefore they, in our signing off, we're simply acknowledging this is not a subdivision, and so this is not under the regulations of the subdivision control law.
I would agree, that's my understanding as well, that as far as the planning board, the Board of Health, though, has a slightly different problem, and that's because, as I'm sure you know, even though they are separate lots and could be sold separately, when they're in common ownership, Title V looks at them and says, if you have multiple dwellings with multiple systems, even though they're in separate lots, if it's in common ownership, you have to look at them collectively as one facility. So if your flow gets above a certain level, they will actually manage you at a different standard than if it was just three separate houses, which is why the Board of Health took a week to figure out whether they were going to sign or not, but I think we got, got John okay, so.
Good. So for our purposes tonight, it's simply a matter of whether, of accepting the A and R, because this, these two lots both meet the minimum frontage, and that's really all we need to, to the center chair.
I don't know whether it's relevant or not, it is true that both lots have sufficient linear frontage, but the remainder lot is under a CR and can't be developed, and the fact is that if you ever did try to put frontage, which you can't do because of the CR, there's a swamp there, which might make actual access, might make it, I don't know, questionable.
Right, and that goes to other boards.
Correct.
So that's...
Yep. All right, so I make a motion that we approve, we approve the A and R application for two forty-five Ridge Street.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded. Any comment from the board? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick thing, so Mr. Temple doesn't have to wait, would you mind just signing the L I L R, and we can take care of the copies afterwards?
Yep. That'd be great, thank you. I also just wanted to thank Camille, she makes it very easy for a layperson like myself to feel comfortable dealing with all this without my engineers.
Camille makes it a lot easier for us as well.
Thank you.
All right.
I have the pen over there, if you wouldn't mind just taking it and signing the L I L R, if you can get that with him.
Jeez.
You're not coming to sign?
Yeah, I am. You guys beat me to the punch. It just, it just takes a little longer for the older guys to get home. That's right. Just, just remind, just remind who's the senior pressing here.
Yeah, I can move into the, well, because I'm fifty-five. I'm over fifty-five.
That's not on the bottom, we got to make sure it's...
Did you have fun?
Yes.
This was an easy one.
Yeah.
Wait till this thing, that are screaming and stuff. So it's going to be...
Don't use your turn, I can't give a memo to record the plan, I'll get that to you online now.
So...
Yes, I could, yes, I, because what I do is I see senior developers, they get the copy and sign.
So we've got them, well, maybe we could put some on.
No, we're just going to sign that one and then go back to the meeting.
Is there time for that?
Do we have to sign all of them, because you laid them all out?
Yes, but you can only, Peter means that one to go, you can sign those out, but not right now, yeah.
Oh, okay, Peter's going to do, you want, all right, okay, just, we'll sign them. All right.
Yeah, hold on, we...
So, yep, does that all sign?
All right, and Caitlin, if you want to go, because we're all set with you.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
And even though Camille's not here, we're going to continue, so the next item would be to appoint a planning board rep for the Community Preservation Commission, so the goal is not going to go back for the CPC, so that's open, so...
Unfortunately, right now, I've got so many...
So there's, basically, there's an open position. I am right now busy, because I have two things going on, so with the, with the permanent building committee and that, so I couldn't do it. So you do go down to either Alan or Josh or Boda, obviously you guys are here.
I wouldn't mind speaking to them and getting a little more input on what the position is.
If I may, I'm the secretary.
Okay, so you can, you can speak to them.
We typically meet on a Thursday evening, we don't meet every month.
Okay.
Typically, we meet a lot of times before town meeting, because everything that the CPC approves has to be approved at town meeting, it goes at a warrant for town meeting. So all the projects, the CPC approves them, they give reference to recommendation, and it gets placed on a warrant for town meeting.
Can you give me an example of something?
Like the memorial fields improvement, Niagara Firehouse.
The new baseball dugout?
Yeah.
Baseball dugout.
I would do that.
And I can send you the guidance that explains what people have, you know, have to go through to apply for something, and I can certainly answer any questions you have, you know.
That'd be great, I'll do that.
Okay, all right, so, so Alan is going to, Alan?
I know. You're going to let me talk?
Sounds like I'm going to hold. Alan, so thank you for volunteering for that. So I make a motion that, to appoint Alan Handel for the CPC rep, for the planning board.
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, well, thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
Sure.
All right. Proposed zoning amendment discussion. All right, so Alan, since this is yours, I will let you present that.
Okay, I think as we saw with the assisted living facility and with other projects, one of the biggest issues with new developments is the lack of communication between the builders or developers and the community. I think it causes a lot of aggravation, a lot of frustration, makes it difficult for people to plan, say, a family event in their yard, if they don't know what's going to be going on in their immediate vicinity. People seemed pretty well relieved once they heard from the developer on the assisted living. So I would like to see that become a requirement, that anytime we have a parcel of four or more units being developed, that the developer be required to either put up a website or create an email list and notify interested parties, and in fact, notify the board of any significant step in the, in the process, so if there are be clearing trees this week, or, you know, laying, laying sewer pipe or water that might disrupt the neighbors, any, any significant events like that should be required to notify, again, by website or a simple email list. Without a penalty, there's not likely to be a lot of compliance, so five hundred dollars seems to be enough to light a fire under people, I would think, and if they fail, it's, you know, we still have discretion, I think it comes back to the planning board, we would have discretion to issue the penalty or warn the parties if, if we could get them to comply. It's not about the penalty, it's just about compliance. So I, I don't know the legality, I don't know how to place this into our bylaws, where it needs to go, but I'd like other people's input on whether they agree that this would be something we should do.
All right, so let me talk to you from a construction guy, so all that sounds really good.
Yeah.
It's a really, it's a great idea. The problem with construction is, we get a plan together, and then you know what hits the fan, and then everything's different. So, you know, I think that your comment of, you know, I think if we could get them to do maybe an anticipated schedule of some sort, or like you said, large events, the problem is, in construction is, we could have something planned, something happens and then we have to reschedule. The thing, what's gonna happen is, is, is if, if it's something where it is so, they have to put more work into it, that they're really not, you know, if you put work into your project, you're gonna get money out of it. If you put work into basically paperwork for the town, that's gonna be something that is gonna be, you know, just a chore.
Right, it's basically sending an email.
Right, well, I, I know that, but I mean, I, I send, you know, and I just, I'm not defending myself or making an argument, but I mean, I spend my day at the computer and I send, I spend, I probably send a hundred emails a day, you know, and each one of them is, could have the, you know, issue of costing thousands of dollars, you know, if I do something wrong. So this is just one more task. What I think maybe is, what you said was, maybe they could do an anticipated schedule and maybe have a website available for people to ask questions. Hey, you know, we saw the big trucks out. One suggestion also is maybe we made it, make it a part of our special permit, you know, because then what we could do is it's part of the special permit and then they would be in violation of it.
Right.
But like I said, I think that the way to make it more palatable for everybody is if, if they could, if they could issue a schedule and people could ask questions and then get a reply. And, you know, obviously, if they don't get a reply, you know, we could have them maybe so they, you know, see, see the chairman on the questions, you know, then maybe we could do it. But I, I think the, I think the penalty thing is gonna be hard, if not impossible, for us to collect.
If we, yeah, I think if we make it part of the permit process and, and make it revoked because of that, that would deserve the same purpose.
Right, yeah.
That's fine. And, and rough schedule, I don't think we need to know that on January fourteenth, they're gonna come in and tear out two acres of woods. I think we're planning on doing it this week.
Yeah.
Didn't get it done this week because of the weather, we're gonna be doing it next week.
You know, in, 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 overall, like I said, if it was a perfect world, I agree with a hundred percent, the neighbor should know what's going on. Just knowing what goes on in a day-to-day, you know, workday, you know, it's hard to, you know, I have a plan for what's gonna happen tomorrow and if, and if about a quarter of it goes the way I expect, I'm doing pretty good.
Right, well, I don't think we're looking to be too granular.
Yeah.
On what they need to provide for information.
So anyone else on the board, any thoughts?
You have, if, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. If this were something that would be allowed to pass as an actual bylaw, you'd have to be very specific about what, what an event is. So you can't just kind of have a general term, you'd have to have a definition that's included so that they have a very specific list of moments or events in which they'd have to provide proper notice.
If we make it, if we make it part of a, our conditions, then we don't have to go and make it a bylaw.
I, correct, you don't have to make it a bylaw. I think you're gonna come up with exactly what Josh is commenting on. Would you consider a major event as a general contractor and what I consider a major event as an abutter could, would most likely be two very different things, especially as you brought up, if that special event happens to be the day that I'm having my, my four-year-old's second birth, you know, my four-year-old's birthday party and I'm gonna have twenty kids running around me. So we would have to be very, very specific. I honestly would question if that would have to run it by town council. I can guarantee, I'm pretty sure that a financial, having any sort of financial penalty is not gonna hold up in court.
Well, if we tied to permit, I'm...
But I don't, would have to definitely go through, Jay, because I can, I can just visualize multiple issues where we're gonna end up in court on this, whether it's from the developer or from the, the neighbors.
And one other thing is, I mean, I think, you know, and just to think about it is, you know, construction is, you know, is a process. It's a, you know, it's, you know, we build stuff, that's what it is. It's not something, and I understand we wanna let people know what's going on, however, the builder has a right to go in and build. I mean, you know, we get, as long as it's after seven o'clock and, you know, before, yeah, before six. By right, we can get up and do it. So, I mean, the thing is, it's, is it noisy?
Yeah.
If you're having a barbecue in your backyard with your neighbors, is it, is it not fun? I got it. But you know what, these guys get up and go to work and that's their work. The fact that, well, let me finish, the fact that we are noisy and we make dust and all that kind of stuff, it, it doesn't make us, it should make them less able to do what they're there to earn their livelihood. Like I said, we're not arguing, we're having a conversation. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just think it's, you're looking at it from the builder's perspective, which is great, you couched it that way, but, and they do have a right to build and they do go to work every day. These people have their life savings and their homes adjacent to this property or on the street and I, I think that there has to be some defense for them. They're, we're not trying to get them to, we're not trying to stop the construction, just want a simple notification process so people can plan around these events.
The way I look at, the way I would say this is that, you know, if, if it was a guidance or hey, we have ability for them to reach out and ask questions, I think that, I would rather have it as a guidance versus if we have, you know, specific events and then it's like, oh, well, you didn't tell me that you were gonna be blasting next Tuesday and I, I have a, you know, a Fabuché egg painting contest.
Don't you think people should know if someone's gonna be blasting?
No, no, I got, I got, they actually get notified, okay, so just, but I just...
All right, so it's just a question of degree on what sort of events.
No, like I said, I, I think the notification, I think, and this is just me, I think, you know, maybe if they could issue some sort of schedule and then they have the ability for people to reach out and get, and then, like I said, if it didn't, you know, if they can't get the answer, then they could reach out, you know, they could copy the chair on it and, you know, that would be something, because I think with the thing, let's just say, I don't know, like, let's, just say it's something different, but they had the parking pla, the parking spot issue, okay, that, that they're dealing with up at Acorn Place. If somebody had reached out and said, hey, you know, they reached out to Bob Fox, or the developer, sorry, and they didn't get back to him, if they had reached out to, if they had the ability to reach out to the, you know, info at, you know, whatever, ABC Development and they didn't get, then they copied the chair on it, then hey, listen, if someone's asking, how come there's a car parked on the sidewalk? And, and maybe that would be an effective way to do it, you know, it's a different way of skinning a cat.
I do like the idea of making, putting something in the condition that, that requires the developer, they have to have it posted, there has to be somebody posted on, onsite that a name, a phone number for the police, for security. There should be, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have that name provided, name, email, phone number for the general public, what, you know, obviously not the same sort of contact and not necessarily posted up, but somehow made available so that they're at, having that as a condition.
What about, what about ABC Builders at, you know, Gmail?
Exactly, yeah.
And so maybe, maybe that, no, maybe that becomes the thing, maybe we do, you know, okay, ABCDevelopment@gmail.com and if there's any questions, it goes to the developer and then they could always copy, because that way it'd be locked into that development, you know, ABC Development and these Gmail, hey, listen, the trucks were running last night at whatever, you know, or hey, you know, you know...
Hey, I've noticed nothing's gone on in the last week, there's, is the, can you, can you just let me know or whatever? But yeah, I don't see a problem with having, as part of our conditions, that a, a form of access, whether it is an email, I would assume most likely an email, but it could be up the developer if they wanted to give somebody's phone number, if they want to establish a website, that the abutters, you know, and then general and public, but really, we should say the public in general, but really, the abutters do have a direct means of access.
I agree.
To contact, I, I don't, I don't see that, and I, again, I'd wanna talk to, to, to talk to Jay and get his opinion, but, and how we would word it, but yeah, asking a developer to put, to set forth a general schedule, you know, you do walk that fine line because there's going to be inevitably at some point, there's gonna be someone that says, well, your schedule says that between this day and this day or, and they're gonna try to hold it to it.
Right, it, it, it's just so hard, and especially in a bigger project, you know, like over the one they just started. You know, they went to put, they went to put a, a manhole in, they dug down and they hit a geezer. And so that thing that took, that should've taken, you know, the guys eight hours, they had to shut the road down, they had to pump water, I think it took like three days and they had twenty-four hour police details. So, you know, I, I, I think a general schedule, you know, a general schedule and maybe it gets updated, you know, if it's every, you know, three months. And we, we could ask for that and we could ask for it to be copied to the Planning Board Office. Maybe we could make that. You know, hey, listen, just give us a general schedule every three months, depending on the size of the project, you know.
A month for me.
You're pushy because there's a lot, I got a lot of stuff going on, I don't wanna do it every month.
I, could I just throw one thing out there? I know for the bigger projects like Emerson Place, the subdivision, things like that, there is a pre-construction meeting that takes place at town hall with all the different departments.
Yeah.
Because BETA's there to represent the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, DPW, Fire Police, and they sit down and go over the pre-construction and when things are gonna start. I mean, I don't know how often they meet, but they do have a pre-construction meeting to kind of itemize...
They do one pre-construction meeting, so...
Right, what's gonna happen and when.
Yeah, so as part of that, I mean, I'm sure the developer, somebody in there that's taking notes or something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so what I mean, what we could do is we could ask for, when they do the project, ask for an initial rough draft of the schedule for what they're thinking. And like I said, I, you know, depending on the size of the project, you know, I, I, I tend to be more liberal because I know how much they, you know, they got going on. If they did it every, you know, I know every monthly, depending on the size of the project is what I would say. I think we could leave that to our discretion. But like I said, if we make it part of our special permit requirements, we, we don't have to do a thing, we can modify it, we can say, hey, this is what we wanna do, we can vote on it and say, yeah, you know, we decided that didn't work and we wanna change it and that way we don't, you know...
So how do we add it to our opponent's, or is it done on a per-permit basis?
We could, we could put together a...
Yeah, we kind of have like a template of general, specific, special conditions for different permits.
Okay.
That are in every decision, but this, I think, would have to be run by Jay Talon and how do we word it and if we want to incorporate into it as a senior residential community development subdivision special permit. You know, you have the control, he can word it so that it's, you know, airtight and then it can be added to whatever you feel appropriate, any decision.
Go ahead, Josh.
Might I also add, I think the reason why I like this idea of a per-permit basis is that every development is distinct, right? So, I mean, not everything Emerson Place, so it, it depends on many of the abutters it's affecting at any given time.
Yeah.
For instance, I'm like the only abutter that is affected by some of this road work or whatever they wanna do here, so, not that my view isn't important, but certainly everything.
Yeah, no, I mean, and it makes sense if, and then if we do it, if it's part of our conditions, we can modify our own conditions. So that would be something, so if you, maybe you should, maybe wanna write that up?
It could accomplish our goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we do it in the form of adding it as a condition, we can, when you're dealing with a Toll Brothers where you're assuming that this is a ten-year project, eight-year project, whatever it's going, you know, it's been more than ten years now already, but they have the, they have the facilities, they have the manpower to say, you know, if we were to, we were to say, we would like to see it updated once a month or, you know, during...
The only thing I would say to that is though, and to cut you off, is that, you know, I, I, we're not gonna have another, we're not gonna have another Toll Brothers in here.
I'm not, I'm using just that as an example, as opposed to when you have an individual developer like Bob Sullivan, for example, who's going in and putting in four houses.
Right.
So you're talking, so I don't...
But to Alan's point, Alan's point, I'm cutting you off again.
Yeah, you are, and I'm calling Lisa.
And to Alan's point, though, I think, you know, we, we have to be flexible enough that, you know, we, we can, which we, Josh said, we can adjust it, so...
That was, if you hadn't cut me off and you let me finish.
I apologize.
I'm married, eh?
I, I do think if we had it as a bylaw, we would lose some flexibility. If we have it as a condition, it's going to allow us to say, okay, this has two abutters and we're giving these abutters, we're giving them the ability, here's the email, here's when we're talking about with Emerson where you're talking about, you know, forty, fifty, but all of that or the, what was going over Cottage Street, that's, we wanna have that flexibility and I think making it a conditions and we, but that will allow us that flexibility and we wanna make a point, once we, we start doing this, to bring this up at some point in the meetings and say, okay, this will be part of your condition, we are asking you, we're telling the public right now that as part of the, the conditions for your special permit, we are going to require you to set up an email, have someone available, however you wanna handle it, if you wanna do it, you know, post, but we need a place where, where our residents can contact you.
Perfect.
And, you know, then it's not just a special per, it's not just in the conditions, but we're letting the residents know that we are, we're requiring them to do this.
Yeah, and like I said, I think if we make it so it's, it's not such a drudgery or chore, you know what I mean, that, that, you know, it's, yeah, okay, I gotta do it, it's, you know, it's, you know, when depending on the size of ours, it's, is that, like, I have to do, you know, stuff and then all of a sudden I'm like, oh, shit.
Yeah, but you know what, we all have to do stuff with our, with our work, so, it's not... But I do like the idea of trying to make, of encourage developers to, you know, just to let people know, because as you said, with, with dove residents, once everybody knew what was going on, they seem to be okay with it, it's just what, you know, what's going on.
That sat idle for a year because of somebody dying and selling, I mean, that sat idle for so long.
Yeah.
There was such a lag in between that that's not typically the norm.
Right.
So would I contact the...
No, you've sent it to us, we, I have to go through Camille to do that because we, we have a budget with the, with the town council. Send it...
Want me to tweak this and give you something?
Yeah, take that, send it to that, send, send it to Camille and then what we'll do is we'll... Do you want, how do you wanna do that? We could send it to...
You have to send it to Jay Talon?
No, 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 but I think we should, can we send it to the group? What we can do is, if you send it to Camille, we can send it to the group, everyone could look at it, mark it up, next meeting, we can all compare our notes because we can't do it separately.
Right.
And, and then we could, then we could send it to Jay once we get a final version hashed out.
And ask him how we can do that as a condition in our decisions.
I mean, I can't, I don't see why we couldn't.
Oh, no, certainly...
And like I said, the beauty of it, if we can try it and...
It's much easier to do it that way than it later.
And see how it works, and see how it works and if it works good, then great, if it doesn't, we need to tweak it, we'll tweak it. All right, sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June eighth, 2021, which was our last remote meeting.
Excuse me, one sec, there was something before that, did I send you the revised agenda? Is payroll signatories?
Yes, you did.
Oh.
Where it's the new fiscal year for FY22, we have to vote on the payroll signatories and bills payable. And it's just for payroll, Rich, it's typically you and Nicole who can authorize by timesheets.
All right.
If you wanna keep it the same, that's what it was last year.
All right, I make a motion that Nicole and I can sign Camille's timesheets.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we make a motion? To give ourselves a raise.
Yeah, she needs a raise before we do.
The last one is just that Rich is authorized to sign on behalf of the board for bills payable.
Oh, right, okay. So can you make that motion?
I make a motion that we allow Chairman Nichols to be able to sign off on bills payable.
Second.
Aye.
All right, motion's made in seconded, sorry.
You... I wait a minute, did I become cheerful?
All right, motion's made in seconded, all in favor?
I'm...
All right, thank you.
And now the minutes.
Now the minutes, okay.
They thought nobody's here.
Good thing, except we're being recorded.
I know, you guys, I need you guys to sign stuff before you leave, so keep that in mind.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the minutes remote from June eighth, 2021.
Second. I abstain.
All right, motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Nicole, I abstain, because she was not there. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June twenty-second, 2021.
I abstain. Oh, wait, someone has seconded.
Okay, motion's been made.
Jesus.
Were you and I the only ones here?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I make, so, motion's been made in seconded, all in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, great. Approval of minutes from July thirteenth, 2021.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for all that. Our next scheduled meeting is September seventh, 2021.
And October twelfth.
And October twelfth. The monthly update, I was going to update because we didn't get an update from Bob.
Do we wanna schedule November?
Sure, actually, we should, we should, yeah, let's schedule November.
When are we, November twelfth? Oh, you already had that.
November...
You're already scheduling November? That means I have to start Christmas shopping soon.
All right, so...
The year's practically over.
Yes.
It's crazy.
Do you wanna do it towards the beginning because the, obviously, November, the Thanksgiving's the twenty-fifth.
How about the ninth because we're meeting October twelfth?
When's town meeting?
Town meeting is November eighth.
Okay.
Sure. Should we meet the second in case we have something that is, it would put a town meeting or would be too late anyway?
Too late to...
Well, the warrant, we should know because the warrant closes in September.
Yeah.
So we should hopefully know if there's anything to go on the warrant by September. So, I mean, but it's up to you if you wanna do the second or the ninth, it's just that sometimes the further apart, if BETA needs two weeks to move you, it's easier to have a little bit of a gap.
If everyone's okay the night?
Is the mouth okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Jeez, I'm out two nights in a row, my God. Because that, that doesn't mean if Kovich hits the fan, right, well, that's beautiful. Going nowhere.
All right, and, yeah, so I think...
So we adjourn and then I...
No, oh, last thing, last thing, sorry, was the MCD discrepancy, so you're gonna get together with Mike at some point to have on that?
Okay.
Good, all right, so I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Night, everybody, thank you.